Welcome, everyone, those sitting, those standing, those at home, to our October 22nd City Council meeting. The first thing on our agenda this evening will be the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. Ready to go? Yep. Okay, and a yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And so we have currently 27 people signed up. And the first one up is Regna Merritt, followed by Deb Frisch.
Hi, again, my name is Regna Merritt. I live in Portland, Oregon, and I'm here on behalf of Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility. And I want to thank Mayor Piercy and all the councilors for inviting Oregon physicians to engage in the work session, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. Oregon physicians ask that you strongly support the proposed Resolution 5065, a resolution to oppose the transport of coal for export through Eugene. Over 300 health professionals signed a letter to the governor requesting review of a comprehensive environmental impact statement and a health impact assessment before approval of any coal export projects. We want to prevent any new sources of morbidity or mortality and increasing costs of health care in Oregon. We're pleased that the proposed resolution calls for an EIS. Oregon physician also requests your support for a simple addition to the resolution. It would add language regarding the need for review of an independent comprehensive health impact assessment before any coal export project is approved. The state's Environmental Justice Task Force and the Accumbination have made similar requests. Copy of those documents are attached in the testimony I've handed you. Our concerns include new major sources of diesel pollution, coal dust pollution along train tracks, in river corridors and at port sites, traffic delays, noise pollution, increased mercury pollution, and increased greenhouse gas emissions, which drive climate change. Coal trains traveling through our communities and massive coal ships on the coast will emit significant amounts of diesel particulate pollution. As you know, there are robust correlations between these pollutants and cardiovascular disease like heart attacks and stroke, respiratory disease, reproductive health, and malignancy. Coal dust which blows off train cars contains mercury, arsenic, and lead. Exposure is linked to asthma and to lung disease. And as noted by Lank County Public Health Officer Dr. Patrick Ludke, chronic problems associated with coal dust particulate matter include contamination of water sources. He also states that trains can block intersections during emergencies and notes that research on noise pollution shows that children repeatedly exposed to train and other noise have decreased reading comprehension abilities and decreased long-term memory. In addition, we have evidence that coal burden Asia emits nitrous and sulfur oxides, ozone, and heavy metals such as mercury, which blow back twists on the trade winds. Mercury is a potent neurotoxin. Eugene residents and the City Council have worked long and hard to improve air quality, livability, and sustainability. Your vote in favor of the resolution before you today, with one simple modification if you please, will support that progress by decreasing huge risks to the health of our families and our communities. Thank you for consideration of our request.
Frisch is next, followed by Lynn Anderson.
Deb Frisch, I live outside the city limits of Eugene. I'm here to like to alert you to a dangerous threat to the well-being of Eugene residents. Ironically, this terrifying menace is viewed by many as a positive force in our community. But this entity is a wolf in sheep's clothing, pretending to contribute to the public good while actually doing us all great damage. You might say, let me guess, Deb, this is going to be yet another rant about Lank County District Attorney Alex Gardner, or maybe your target's Chip Kelly. But no, the dangerous entity to which I refer is the Eugene Register Guard. I guess Alton F. Baker III missed the day in journalism school when they learned that public newspapers supposed to impartially report the news. Alton F. Baker III is the editor and publisher of the Register Guard and a descendant of the founder of the paper, Alton F. Baker. Instead of impartially reporting the news, Mr. Baker III tries to determine the news. The Register Guard worked hard to derail 4J's plans to sell Civic Stadium, and the RG succeeded. The cover of Angela Swartout's trial was absurdly biased in favor of the prosecution. You remember Ms. Swartout, the woman accused of murdering a baby that never existed. But the most outrageous and offensive example of the Register Guard's habit of trying to determine the news is the case of rigging the May 2012 primary race for Lank County Commissioner between Pat Farr and Rob Handy. The scam began when the Register Guard submitted a public records request to Lank County for a copy of a letter from a lawyer making unsubstantiated and ludicrous allegations about Mr. Handy. Presumably, the Register Guard knew of the existence of the letter because the lawyer alerted the Register Guard to the letter's existence. Lank County Administrator Leanne Richardson worried that the Register Guard's public records request constituted a county emergency. She convinced the three Republican commissioners to convene an emergency meeting. They voted to release the Handy-bashing letter to the Register Guard. The emergency meeting became front-page news, along with, of course, the ridiculous allegations in the letter from some lawyer in town. The Register Guard has collaborated with County Administrator Richardson and the three Republican commissioners in stealing the election for Mr. Farr. What a farce. Farr versus Handy, what a farce. Administrator Richardson and the three commissioners should be charged with official misconduct for falsely alleging a public records request from the Register Guard was an emergency. Anyway, if the bias in the Register Guard doesn't scare the bejesus out of you, you're not paying enough attention to the Register Guard. Thank you.
Lynn Anderson is next, followed by Deb McGee.
I spoke here two weeks ago mostly about me being really concerned about property values of people who live along the tracks like us. But I've been looking into this more. I had just kind of been busy with my daughter's wedding this year, and this snuck up on me. And I'm really alarmed at what I found out. This is from the report, Heavy Traffic Ahead. It was prepared for the Western Organization of Resource Councils, you probably know of it. But I'm not sure that people know that this was prepared by a transport expert, rail transport expert, and she said that it's going to cost billions of dollars to upgrade the rail lines in order to handle the rail traffic from the coal trains. And the way the laws are written, 95 percent of that cost will fall on the taxpayers. Now, I'm not quite sure, she says in there, it's going to fall on the local government and then we're going to have to try and get it from state and federal. This is really alarming to me, especially at a time when we're shutting down schools and all that. Another thing is that we're gaining some jobs in Coos Bay, but because of the heavy traffic that they're adding to the rail system, it's going to be making it so slow and expensive that all these people who have been shipping out of Portland and Seattle will be looking to ship elsewhere. And especially Seattle, it says, will be hit with loss of jobs because it's not going to be a trade-off with, I guess it's more automated, with coal export. So, and then another economic issue is that I'm thinking about all the people in the Eugene area who are uninsured, who have no health insurance, and when the problems start coming up with the lung-related issues and all this, they're going to be showing up at hospitals wanting, needing health care. Who's going to pay for that? There's some really big issues here. And I just feel like the environmental impact and the impact on the health and the economic impact, all these things together, who's really benefiting from this? And it seems to me it's only a very small group of people, and mostly some rich coal companies very far away. Anyway, that's about all I can say.
Deborah McGee is next, followed by Sally Crum.
My name is Deborah McGee, and I've lived for 27 years at 29755 Lusk Road. In the 1950s, when Rachel Carson shared the scientific evidence about DDT and its harmful effects on living things, people who were against the ban said that it would cost jobs, that it was about freedom and capitalism. But we know now that banning DDT was the right thing to do. It improved human health and planetary health. In the 1970s, when the scientific link between cancer and cigarette smoking became clear, people who didn't want smoking restrictions said that that would cost American jobs and freedom and choice. But eventually, we even passed laws that had to do with secondhand smoke. Human health improved. The ban was the right thing to do. Now, in 2012, we're talking about continuing to transport and burn coal. I'm a retired public school counselor, and the most recent evidence that has got me thinking about this is a study in Quebec that looked at the undisputable link between the levels of mercury in children's blood and the number of attention deficit disorder, attention hyperactive disorder, and other neurological problems that those children were experiencing. Those educational diagnoses are epidemic in the schools now. Well, coal is a source of mercury contamination. It's the right thing to do to stop burning it and to ban transporting it. Oregon needs jobs that improve health, not jobs that damage it. Please, don't allow coal trains to come through Eugene. Thank you.
Sally Crum is next, followed by Jim Olsted.
Okay, I don't have any notes or anything, but I just want to say that, to me, it just doesn't make sense to, when we're all concerned about environment and about CO2 in the environment. I was just reading a scientific report of a man who has studied the layers of ice in the Arctic for years, and he said that normal parts per million of carbon dioxide is 180 to 280 parts per million. And as we fluctuate over the ages, because they can tell from the layers of ice, as we fluctuate over the ages, that's when, you know, our environment goes back and forth between Ice Age and Warm and Ice Age and Warm. Well, we're right now at more than 350 parts per million carbon dioxide. And this is not just a problem of China or the United States, it's a problem of the entire Earth. So why are we even thinking about transporting coal from our country, using the energy to take that coal to China, and have them burn what I read today in the paper, and I don't know if this was true or not because I didn't fact-check, but when they burn the amount of coal that we're sending, it's going to create as much CO2 as we create in the whole Western United States in a year. It doesn't make scientific sense. It doesn't make sense because, you know, Eugene has this national, international reputation for having great food and having a healthy environment and being a beautiful place. And what's the cost going to be? The hidden cost, what's the hidden cost going to be? You know, health and beauty and people's property values and all that that other people are saying. So that's all I have to say, but I just feel really strongly that it's just the wrong direction to take. And you know, if Eugene had the guts to stand up against it, just think, you know, just think what that would do. Because it needs to be done everywhere.
Next is Jim Olsted, followed by Mel Bancuff.
Thank you all for being here tonight and holding this proceeding. My name is Jim Olsted. I live at 214 Trailside Loop, Eugene, Oregon 97405. I'm a citizen, and I vote. And I just want to tell you that I am angry and bitter that I even have to be here tonight, or you have to be here tonight, to consider this proposal to ship coal through this beautiful city. And I want to urge you to do the right thing. This is a unique opportunity to do the right thing, not just locally, not just on a statewide level, but regionally, nationally, and even internationally. And I hope that you will seize this opportunity to do the right thing on all of those levels. I'd also like to urge you and ask you, plead with you, to draw the line hard on this one. Draw the line hard on coal. Because if you don't draw the line hard on coal right now, the next thing you're going to be asked to do is to approve trains or trucks hauling nuclear waste through this city and through this county, or some other even worse god-awful thing that our society will come up with to generate energy until we have true green energy. So draw the line here, draw it hard, draw it on coal. And that's another way of saying, I ask you not to engage in the politics of choosing between your evils. That's something we can say for this presidential election. In other words, draw the line hard on coal, draw it now, draw it forever, and draw it for not only the people here, and I thank all the people who are here to testify against the coal trains. Draw the line for everybody in your region. And I want to make a comment. I noticed that there are a lot of Boy Scouts here. My inclination was to go up to one of these Boy Scouts and ask for advice on what to say to you all, because they are the youth. This world belongs to them, not to me, not to you. You make decisions for them, but it belongs to them. Unfortunately, before I could ask for advice, one of their advisors told me, children are to be seen and not heard. And that broke my heart. I was raised that way. It's terrible. So these Boy Scouts are here to observe and see what a political process is like, and I hope you show them tonight, and we all can put on a good show for them. But it's sad, because I don't know what they're going to, they are not going to testify. I'd like to ask them, do any of you back there, Boy Scouts, okay, kiddies shaking their head? You're in uniform, so I won't put you on the spot. But I would ask the City Council, I would ask you to invite not the Boy Scout or boys, but youth and citizens to participate in the future, maybe when they're out of uniform and they're not under the watchful eye of other people. But aren't they allowed to talk and speak to, and aren't their voices the ones that count? Thank you.
Ellen Anderson is next, followed by Laura Ohanian.
Hi, my name is Mel Bancuff, Eugene. Thanks for having the public forum. I think it was a great segue, the last fellow. But one thing I wanted to start with, it's interesting that this is the first election since 1988, that there was no mention of climate in the debates, and there was over $150 million put in by the oil and coal industry. But when I'm here tonight, people can talk about the other facts and problems of coal, but I run a nonprofit in town called Partners for Sustainable Schools. And one of the jobs, one of the things that we do, we do this thing called the Coal School Challenge. And so I'm here to represent the voice of 1,200 children that we worked with over the last year who sign pledges for earth stewardship, and that's for protecting the environment and how it is that they can find their voices in getting petitions out to a lot of their public representatives. And we heard back from Kitzhopper with a lot of support, and we heard back from the school administrators with support. And just to let you know, the work that we do is funded by EREB. We work with the University of Oregon to get interns, and the Energy Management Program at LCC. And we can't hide behind the ignorance anymore or the lack of responsibility for the choices that we make. We're coming up against some limits. And the limits are what we're doing to our climate. And our climate is just the barometer for the economic attitude that we've had, seeing that the climate is just a dumping ground. It's a commons that we all share. So I just like to say, a 10-year-old understands the science, along with the 97 percent of the earth scientists that are out there that said that climate change is real and coal is the number-one contributor. So let's join, like Milwaukee, Oregon, Portland, Oregon, saying no to coal, and use our local power to make a real difference for ourselves and oil life on this planet. And we're going to be teaching 2,000 more kids, we're going to be signing more pledges. There's 280 green schools around the state and representing probably about 150,000 kids that are learning how to be stewards. And it's time for us to take responsibility as adults, because they have a hell of a world that they're going to come into. Thank you.
Laura Ohanian is next, followed by, oh, no, I'm sorry. For the benefit of everyone in the room, no, not you.
Oh, okay.
For the benefit of everyone in the room, just like in our council chambers, we don't clap, we don't boo, we don't hiss, we just listen respectfully and make this a safe place for everyone. So please, no clapping, no responses, please. Laura.
My name is Laura Ohanian. I live downtown Eugene. I'd like to ask you to please support Resolution 5065 with a full environmental impact statement. Our society is so based on growth at any cost, the increase in the GNP with poor technologies and destructive practices seems to be what we just do. Then people get sick, and that increases the GNP. It's everything that this culture is based on makes no sense to me. Our environment and our health and our quality of life is in decline. And who's making the decisions? Doesn't feel like it's the people, doesn't feel like it's the kids or the young adults or even some of us older adults who have no power because we have no economic power. I think we're really at a tipping point as to which direction we're going to be going soon, because there's no denying the climate is in trouble. And digging dirty coal and shipping it across two or three states and shipping it across the ocean to be burned in Asia so that all the particulates and stuff comes back to make us ill, that might increase the GNP, but it's not going to increase our quality of life. And I don't really care about the fact that maybe the city doesn't have the authority to say no to this, but if every little community starts standing up to these awful technologies, these...
Thank you. Next is Paul Cosgrove, followed by Bee Rivers.
Thank you, Mayor Piercy. Members of the council, my name is Paul Cosgrove. I reside in Portland, and I represent the American Forest and Paper Association, proud to represent that organization and its predecessors for nearly 30 years on recycling issues in the state of Oregon. Here to talk about one of the aspects of one of the other agenda items, the bag organs. And one factor I'd for you to consider is, the national recycling rate for paper bags is over 50 percent. I can guarantee you, although I wasn't able to pull the data, that the recycling rate in this city and this county is far higher than that. And the reason that's important is not only are those paper bags recycled, but they are a very valuable fiber. I think your solid waste staff would agree that that fiber in your recycling program is one of the actual cost benefits and one of the things that helps support your recycling programs. But even more importantly, it's one of the things that helps support the paper industry, the remaining paper industry in this state and the Northwest. All of our mills use recycled fiber. Many of them use more than 50 percent of their feedstock is recycled fiber. And to the extent we can collect those products after they've been used by consumers and move them in a very small circle within about a 50-mile radius from use to recycling to remanufacturing into bags and back into the marketplace, we help support jobs in a local economy. It's something that's very uniquely a paper story, and it's very uniquely a Willamette Valley and Oregon story. Our concerns about this ordinance are two issues. One is the definition of a recycled paper bag. It currently talks about 40 percent post-consumer waste. I think you would find your retailers would have very great difficulty finding bags that have 40 percent post-consumer waste, but they would most certainly find lots of bags that were 40 percent recycled fiber. And the difference between the two is, post-consumer means that the fiber came after, had gone to a household, and then back into the recycling system. The general recycling rate, which almost everybody uses in general common discussions, and that's how we all count it, and EPA counts it nationally, is to include those kinds of waste that come from print shops and converting shops which have left the plant, so they're not industrial waste being recycled, but they haven't yet made it to the consumer. Now, if that isn't counted as recycled, it gets thrown away. So it's best to delete those two words, "post-consumer." The second concern is the fee. I would hesitate to say that Portland could ever get something better than this city or the city of Corvallis. I'm married to a duck. I recognize what town I'm in. But in fact, this case, Portland did do the correct thing by eliminating a fee on paper bags. You may have heard from retailers that the cost of paper bags is dramatically higher. We have data, be glad to share it with you, that comes from surveys.
Thank you. Bee Rivers is next, followed by Leroy Marney, I think. Bee Rivers.
I'm Bee Rivers. I live in Eugene. I was born and raised here, just off of North Park, and want to share with you some of the things that people have told me when I went through neighborhoods near the coal train tracks, and also speak to some broader issues. But first, I want to urge you two things. Vote yes on Resolution 5065, and thank you, Mr. Zelenka, for sponsoring it. And also, please open up a community discussion about the kinds of jobs that we need here in Eugene and Lank County, in southern Oregon, in the whole region. We need to have a visioning session about the longevity of the jobs that we want here and the quality of life that they will bring. I have talked to a lot of people who live near the train tracks, and these are the kinds of things that I want you to consider, please, when you think about what you're going to vote on Resolution 5065. There was the woman on Glory Drive and her friends on Hardy and Marion Lane who were talking about selling their homes when I stopped by because of the coal trains. The man on Elkhay whose son has severe asthma, who would have to take his son to the hospital more frequently. The daycare on North Park and the woman next door who can smell the chemicals from the train. The sober living home on Second and Chambers near the Eugene Mission. How are those folks going to be able to recover from the traumas and the illnesses that they're suffering if they're being bombarded with toxins? The pulmonary services on Roosevelt, the emergency services on Sexton and Chamber, where the fire and police station training center is. This is a photograph from the derailing in Mesa, Washington, mid-July. Okay? Now, you may be aware that the Coos Bay Line makes a sharp turn right there at the Chambers Connector next to the fire and police stations. Can you imagine our emergency first responders buried under all of this? Okay, so I want you to think about that when you vote. Okay, so I want you to think about that when you vote. The man with cancer on Cross Place, the woman on Oxygen on Cross Place, and the other woman on Briar Cliff with Oxygen, the preschool on Briar Cliff, the preschool on Thomason, the woman with COPD on the end of Thomason, My River Road, and the apple orchards there, the pregnant woman with children on Thomason, the foster parents on Thomason, the 47-year-old woman with lung tumors on Holman who used to live one block away from the train tracks on Roosevelt. The man with asthma on Briar Cliff and the other man with asthma on Arora, the woman with asthma using a nebulizer and Oxygen on Willow, just a block, stone throw away from the tracks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have signatures that I'm going to provide to you of people who have signed a letter, and the letter is included.
Leroy Marnie, it looks like his name is next, followed by Jerry Rosemeyer.
Madam Chair, and members of the council, I've made a career being a local and temporary construction worker, reporting to a job, finishing that project, and moving on to the next one, building our highways and local and statewide infrastructure. My name is Leroy Marnie. I'm president of the Lake East Crete Douglas Building Trades Council, and thank you for having this hearing and inviting us to share our thoughts. We represent 36 different locals or councils in the state of Oregon. The council works as the voice of the building trades in the region, ensuring its tradesmen, women, and women have fair labor agreements and the best continuing education and apprenticeship training available. It also serves as a resource for those seeking highly skilled tradespeople. Today I'm here to talk about Eugene jobs crisis. Our people feel it every day. I know that each of you hear from your constituents about the need to find ways to put people back to work in Eugene. We all know the employment numbers. We also need to remember that it's middle-class families, working families, that have incredibly hard-hit during this recession and slow recovery. In addition to the many skilled people that I'm proud to represent, one of Oregon's greatest strengths is our position on a positive limb and opportunities that creates for trades and exports. Exports help build our region, and as the world becomes a smaller and smaller place, exports can help rebuild our region. In 2010, President Obama recognized a critical role exports can play in driving Eugene's economic recovery, promised to double U.S. exports over the next five years, which he estimated could create 2 million jobs. I'm not some of those jobs created here. As is well-known, several companies have proposed upgrading or building new shipping terminals in Oregon for the purpose of exporting coal around the world. While I cannot speak on the specifics of each project, I can tell you that these projects will be good for Eugene's economy and will help put the people I represent back to work. Each coal export proposal should undergo careful environmental review by the professional regulators, state and federal, to ensure compliance with existing laws. But the legislature in the state with unemployment above the national average and that is routinely forced to cut funding for schools shouldn't put up a new roadblock to the hundreds of middle-class jobs and millions in tax revenues that the coal exports could bring to Oregon. Let's be clear. If we don't build a shipping terminal here in Oregon, the jobs, tax benefits, and yes, the demand for coal energy won't disappear. It will all just go someplace else, most likely a foreign country, a country most likely that has fewer laws to protect the environment and fewer laws to protect and promote worker rights. How does this help our society and environment?
Somebody pulled it over, and it's right where people, all their papers land on it, so if you could shift it, that would be great. Jerry Rosemeyer, followed by Brock Nelson.
Jerry Rosemeyer, 1380 Hughes Street, Ward 6. I'm here to speak in favor of Resolution 5065, and I urge you all to vote on it as if you were investing your life savings in the project. I consider it very risky. I'm sure you've seen the billboards around town with the beautiful picture of Coos Bay's harbor with those two big red dice hanging over them. This coal export facility makes a weekend at the casino look like a sure bet. It's very risky. The benefits are there for Coos Bay, but none of the other cities, like has already been mentioned, Milwaukee, Portland, Eugene, we just get the risk, and I'd like to talk about a few of them. Coal train derailments. It's estimated that every year in the United States, there's about 26 derailments, about one every two weeks. The website coaltrainfacts.org cites this year, up to right now, 15 coal train derailments so far this year. You can draw your own conclusions. 15 coal train derailments, 26 of all kinds. If the Coos Bay facility goes through at least 730 fully-loaded coal trains through Eugene every year, are you feeling lucky? You know, it's risky. Job. You're going to hear jobs, jobs, jobs. Very risky to take projected, possible, maybe jobs and trust them. When Mr. Cox was here from the port of Coos Bay, you know, no, no, he didn't talk so much about the coal export facility. He didn't talk about coal. He talked about the rail line and how it would bring more trade relations and more jobs between the two cities. He mentioned that when the fully-upgraded coal train link was in place, if it all goes through, that that would remove hundreds of what he called diesel-spewing trucks from the road. Well, what he meant is, what he said is, those temporary jobs upgrading the tracks equals hundreds of permanent truck-driving jobs dropped, because they wouldn't be needed. Stuff could go by rail. Now, we might think that's a good idea, but some of those truck drivers undoubtedly live in your wards. A risk for you to think about. The big risks, however, are the entire project itself. I'm sure you're all familiar with the environmental risks they've been brought up. We know what they are going to be. We're seeing them. We open up our daily paper. We see them. We know what it's going to be. The financial risks are something else. Just here in Oregon, liquid natural gas import—no, no, no, export. You got the idea.
Brock Nelson is next, followed by Carla Herbert.
Mayor Percy and members of the city council, I'm Brock Nelson. I'm Union Pacific's Director of Public Affairs headquartered in Portland. I just have a couple of comments about your proposed resolution on coal. Union Pacific provided a letter and some supporting documentation to you in advance of your work session two weeks ago. Just want to clarify that in our written comments, Union Pacific committed to using surfactants on all coal cars originating in Wyoming's Powder River Basin that would potentially move through Eugene. Also, Union Pacific is not aware of fire hazards being a reason for preventing the use of covers on coal cars. In fact, Union Pacific is actively evaluating the use of covers on coal cars. Regarding the proposed resolution, which you are considering here tonight, Union Pacific shares your concern for human health and the environment. The safety of our employees, neighbors, and the communities where we operate is our top priority. However, Union Pacific does not agree with your conclusions as they relate to coal train traffic through the city of Eugene. As such, Union Pacific opposes the proposed resolution. Whatever you decide tonight, I offer my continued support and look forward to working with the city in the future. Thank you.
Carla Herbert is next, followed by Juan Carlos Vallee.
Hi, my name is Carla Herbert. I live in the River Road area—sorry, in Eugene. And I spoke last Monday and at the county commissioners, and I'm thanking you all for letting us speak tonight. Dear city council members, I'm here tonight to strongly support City Councilor Ellen Zelenka's proposal to restrict the export of coal by train through Eugene's rail yard and our West Eugene neighborhoods. Mining, transporting, and shipping coal overseas from Oregon have clear, long-term negative consequences, including environmental, financial, safety, and health impacts. As we've heard, fatalities have already occurred from derailments. I wonder how many jobs will be lost when our salmon and waterways are permanently contaminated when—not if, but when a train spills coal over one of the 150 bridges and waterways to cross going down to Coos Bay. Coal-related pollutants are among the top 10 causes of death and disease in the United States. As a cardiac nurse and an exercise physiologist, I'm very concerned about the health risks to neighbors living near the tracks, including myself. The U.S. EPA has expressed their concern about the public health impacts of exposure to coal dust and diesel particulate from the transport of coal in the Northwest. Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad studies estimate up to 500 pounds of coal in the form of coal dust can be lost from each railcar en route. Looking at maybe 20 to 60 trains, the trains will be one to one and a half miles in length moving through communities on a daily basis. That's a lot of coal dust. Coal dust, we know, is a fine particulate. It settles on our water, soil, vegetation. It may actually impair photosynthesis. The diesel emissions cause lung damage, aggravate asthma, and heart disease. Coal dust can cause bronchitis, emphysema, trigger asthma attacks, and is especially harmful for children since their lungs are still developing. Lake County has the highest risk of asthma—I mean, the highest rate of asthma—in the country. I've worked with folks in West Eugene, teaching them how to deal with their asthma, because they cannot move away from the industries that they live nearby, the bad air. American Lung has given us—Lake County, our air shed—a grade of a C minus. Many communities in Oregon and Washington, including Milwaukee, Portland, have unanimously passed a resolution opposing the coal trains for counting on your leadership to stop the trains. Thank you very much.
For the folks in the back of the room, even though we're not in our council chambers, the rules still apply. No signs. Thank you. You can wear them—stickers on your body, but you can't hold up signs. Juan Carlos Vallee is next, followed by Benton Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and councils for the opportunity to speak. My name is Juan Carlos Vallee. I live in Ward 2. On November 14, the Eugene Planning Commission plans on holding a public hearing regarding the appeal of the Hill's official denial of the Dearbrooke development. The Amazon Headwaters, also known as Green and Beverley Properties, are vital to the water quality and environmental health of South Eugene area, and also has a community-wide value. This is without a doubt a rare gem in one of the few natural habitats left between urban growth boundaries. The land has a high natural resource for its high density, that is bio-density, and irreplaceable wild-of connectivity. So once again, this portion of the Amazon Headwaters is targeted for housing development. While I respect the owners' pursuit of developing the property for the full time, it's time to end this game of Russian roulette and move from rhetoric to acquisition. I call for the city council to form a blue ribbon task force to determine how to bring the headwaters into public ownership. We know the potential sources of funds: federal grants, state grants, nonprofit grants, a new portion of open space bond measure, and of course, private donations. This has been an issue going on for the last 18 years. It is time to close the book on this subject. Please act before it's too late. Tonight's theme is courageous leadership, one that Council Zelenka is hopefully leading us to tonight. We have visitors from trip number 61. Make it proud. I ask that you consider that we have already high rates of asthma and cancers in our community, compounded in West Eugene. Councilors, this is also a social justice issue. Again, we need to consider carefully, and foremost, the long-term impact of decisions we make. In that regard, I support Resolution 5065 for the city council to oppose the transport of coal and export through our beautiful community. For your time, I thank you.
Benton Elliott is next, followed by Donald Burton.
Thank you. My name is Benton Elliott. I live at 1313 Lincoln Street, and I'm in George Brown's Ward 1. So here we are, more than three months after Councilman Zelenka offered a thoughtful resolution to protect our city from coal export and dirty coal trains. I think this is a no-brainer, and I think there should have been a unanimous yes vote in July. While the city council fiddled, 30 other Pacific Northwest cities, including Seattle and Portland, passed no coal resolutions protecting their communities. We're Eugene. We should be leading, not procrastinating, on this important issue. The few voices who speak in support of coal export claim that it will create jobs, promote energy independence, support small businesses, and be good for the economy. But let's examine those claims. Beyond temporary construction jobs, perhaps a dozen jobs will be created at the terminal in Coos Bay, and we've already heard about the costs of those jobs, those few jobs, to our community. Energy independence, the coal export model is to extract from open-pit mines in Montana and Wyoming, transport that coal to Coos Bay, and ship it all to Asia, so none of this coal will be used to produce energy in America. In terms of support for small business, actually, there are only a few large out-of-state corporations who profit from natural resource extraction who will benefit from this coal export. And on economic benefits, you just need to look north. Portland already tried this. In the early 1980s, they constructed a coal export terminal at the port of Portland at a cost of $25 million. A few years later, it was shut down. They never shipped an ounce of coal. The demand in Asia for coal switched. It changed, and the market was no longer there. And with all that's going on right now in China and their financial markets, that continues to be a huge risk today. I believe the greatest responsibility and the highest duty of a city councillor should be to protect our community. Coal export and dirty coal trains damage our community, our health, and our quality of life. Before casting your vote tonight, I ask you to open your heart and ask yourself, why am I here and what is my duty? Thank you.
Donald Burton is next, followed by Sabra Markroft.
Good evening. I'm Donald Burton. I'm in Ward 2. I've lived in Eugene 20-some years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I don't take it lightly. I was raised in a union family. My grandfather helped start the UAW in Detroit in the late '40s, '50s, so I look at labor issues all the time, but I'm also—I'm a former scout, and so I weigh that against environmental issues. And it's been said ad nauseam, so I won't really say much, other than I'm a voter and I represent a number of people in my family and community that were—we would really like to see us pass this resolution. And my understanding is, it's really just a symbolic resolution, that the feds really have us over the bill on this one, no matter what we say, but we are a community, and we can, like, you know, shine and say, this is bad for us, it's bad for our kids. And I'd hate to leave this legacy behind that we just stood out of the side when we strapped out of Wyoming, we take it somewhere. It's really not in our life for us. And that's what people in my neighborhood are saying, we'd like you guys to pass this symbolic, advanced resolution. Thank you for your time.
Sabra Markroft is next, followed by Greg Payden, I believe it is.
Hello, my name is Sabra Markroft. I reside in Ward 7. I'm here to speak tonight primarily on banning the bag. So many creative opportunities that can be created by this one simple act. And the nickel-a-bag, I don't know what the right choice is about it. I'm sure you folks know— I'm sure you folks know much more about it than I do. But that said, there are so many opportunities we have to create so much better jobs that here, Coos Bay, the entire region. And getting together to discuss where those jobs are going to come from is something we really need to do in pronto, because we can't afford to be beholden to corporations who are not legally allowed to care what happens to us. Thank you very much for your time and all of your hard work over the past couple of weeks. I know it's been a tough one.
Greg Payden is next, followed by Gordon Levitt.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Piercy. Members of the council, my name is Greg Payton. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm from Portland, and I'm here representing the Alliance for Northwest Jobs and Exports. Our alliance consists of over 45 organizations across Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. It's over 200,000 employees, 38,000 businesses, includes trade unions, trade associations, companies, and individuals. It's a nonpartisan group funded by the Coalition of Coal and Rail Companies. While our alliance supports all of the proposed shipping terminals and coal export projects at the various stages of development, I'm not here to speak for any individual project. But I am here to talk about Oregon's jobs and the state's revenue crisis. As elected officials, you are well aware of the economic hardships your constituents have experienced in the past few years and how that has translated into flatter declining revenues from government services. To address this crisis, policymakers, excuse me. Unions, businesses in Oregon are all working hard to promote policies that put people back to work. Over long term, putting people back to work is also the best solution to rebuilding the foundation of our fractured tax base. Different parts of Oregon are pursuing different strategies to restore economic growth and opportunity, with each playing to its respective strengths and working to take full advantage of its assets. One of the most important valuable assets of our position on the Pacific Rim and our export economy, one in four jobs in the region is trade-related. Another one of our strengths is our port facilities and related transportation infrastructure that moves commodities and products effectively throughout the region. I think a lot of what I wanted to say has already been said. I want to emphasize that whether it is coal burning in Asia, whether it is folks' concerns with that impact, the choice for Oregon and for the Northwest is really whether the jobs are going to be here or not. Because if we don't do it here, we're not going to stop Asia from burning coal. As you may have done in your research, there's about 25 countries around the world that produce coal. A quick search on Google would show you that most of those countries are countries that don't have anywhere near the environmental regulations that the United States has, and there's no doubt that China will get those, the assets and the natural resources they need from wherever they can. I think what I'd ask you to think about as you're making a decision on this project is what is the opportunity to provide coal, provide energy to the oil sources? Thank you.
Gordon Levitt is next, followed by Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor Piercy and members of the council. My name is Gordon Levitt, and I'm a four-year resident of Eugene and a first-year law student here at the University of Oregon School of Law. I'm coming here tonight to ask you to continue to oppose coal transport through Eugene. As a lifelong resident of Oregon, and most recently Mojer, Oregon, before I came to Eugene, I want to say that the whole state is threatened by any city that goes along with supporting coal transport through their municipality. Mojer, Oregon has a population of around 450 people in the Columbia River Gorge area, and recently their city council, or more like just the mayor because they don't have a city council, sent a letter to the governor saying that the train tracks are 100 yards from the school ground that I grew up playing in, running around in. And this reminded me of the grave danger that coal transport on a daily basis will pose to the health of our children and future children. And additionally, in the report, they mentioned that the cherry growers co-op, with cherries being the main industry in the Mojer area, is only 30 yards away from the train track. I'm sure that cities across the state are faced with businesses and people that would be threatened by the health dangers of coal transport. Eugene has the opportunity to stand up for small towns like Mojer and to do its part to mitigate against climate change and protect a prosperous future. I would also like to put in a few words for Ben Wright, who's a U of O physicist and a seven-year resident of Eugene who was unable to get here in time to sign up to speak. He wanted to let you know that the short-term damages outweigh the long-term benefits in the transportation of coal. The train delays in town will impede citizens in their regular daily life, and coal traffic interferes with Amtrak public transportation and threatens ecosystems along the entire path of transport. Thank you for your time and efforts on this matter.
Kyle de Bond, it looks like, or de Board, followed by Anske Williams Simrath.
It's Kyle de Board. I live in the Friendly Street area here in Eugene, have for a long time. People can address the hazards and the health issues much better than I can. The reason I'm here tonight is because I've reached a point where I'm appalled that there seems to be a concerted effort to extract and leave behind moonscape in North America, whether it's Anglo-American in Bristol Bay, Alaska, whether it's trans-Canada with their pipeline across the country, the heartland of the country, whether it's British Petroleum in the Gulf, or an Australian, New Zealand company extracting precious metals from southwestern I'm just wondering where the Tea Party is on this, you know? I grew up in Virginia, where we studied the revolution over and over and again, and the very simplest economic understanding is that the extraction and export of raw materials, natural resources from a country, from any country, does not create wealth. It does not create prosperity. It's called mercantilism, and that's one of the reasons the American Revolution was fought, because this colony on this continent cannot abide British mercantilism anymore. This will not create jobs. It creates, just like people have said, it creates wealth for a few, whether they're British corporations, whether they're American corporations, multinational corporations, or some people somewhere. It does not, I repeat, the extraction and export. And why are we doing it? If it's a valuable, utilizable resource, why can't it be used here? That would create jobs. Are we just doing it to export pollution to the other side of the globe? The one thing we learned from all this science and all this environmentalism in the last 50, 100 years is that this is not a, we're not separate. It's an intertwined global system. And if we export our pollution to China, it doesn't, it isn't going to free us. We're still going to suffer from that, whether you believe in karma or whether you believe in material will. That pollution still will affect us. We're not getting away with anything by exporting coal. If it can be used, let's hang on to it until the technology catches up and we can use it here. Thank you.
Anske Williams Simrath, and followed by Joe Tyndall.
Thank you to the council and the mayor. I reside at 2824 Harris, second ward. And thank you to everyone who's here. I'm both stunned and taken aback that this has to be done piecemeal, that there doesn't seem to be a governance in our country, and certainly not in our world, that considers the health of the planet and every life form, and the children especially. My undergraduate work was in environmental sciences, as was my employment. My graduate work was in special education, as was my second line of employment. All levels of the coal train scenario, from removal of the coal from the ground, transportation of it with the contamination, which we've heard very well documented by several medical professionals, contamination along the route, and export of that resource resulting in combustion of that highly polluting power source, all of these actions along this whole arc are highly dangerous to the environment, ultimately to us as humans if we don't even conceive of the other parts of the environment. I think that it is extremely important that we, as Oregonians and Americans and citizens of the world, continue to look at employment. It's so important. I have several young adults in my life who are suffering from the lack of employment opportunities, highly educated people, and some just very willing to work hard with their hands. I would like to point out that employment, it's time to make decisions and actions and have thoughts about making employment based on renewable resources, renewable resources. Two years ago, I put photovoltaic panels on my roof with the support of EWEB, federal tax support, state tax support, and at that time, I had a choice between buying photovoltaic panels made in China, almost certainly made with coal as the energy source for the production, and photovoltaic panels made in Oregon at a zero-waste facility. I chose the Oregon option. It cost me $500 more for 15 panels, and I'm very happy to just be able to state that that is the kind of employment that I think will benefit our town, our state, and the world. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Joe Tyndall is next, followed by Sarah Higginbotham.
Good evening. Joe Tyndall. I hope you remember October 22, 2012, as the night the Eugene City Council stood up to big money and said, "No, a living planet is more important." James Lovelock, for decades the world's foremost atmospheric scientist, seeing that business as usual will likely prevail and understanding the impact of positive feedback on climate, wrote The Revenge of Gaia, which is well worth reading. In it, he projects by the year 2100, the carrying capacity of the Earth will be reduced to less than 500 million people. That means without major change, more than 8 billion people will need to die prematurely over this coming century as a result of global warming. All of this can be found in the 2007 IPCC report, if you know how to read it. James Hansen, head of NASA's Goddard Institute for Space Studies, has stated it's game over for the climate if the Keystone Pipeline is built to ship Canadian tar sands oil to refineries along the Gulf of Mexico. The carbon locked in Western coal deposits is far greater than the carbon in tar sands. Do we really want to ship coal to China so companies like Mitt Romney's Bain Capital can extract wealth by sending even more of our jobs to China? Yes, boys and girls, the choice really is that stark. For the conservatives on this council, can you not see the contradiction? In public, the phrase "more jobs for Americans" keeps popping out of Mitt Romney's mouth. In private, he and his billionaire buddies are busy securing energy supplies to expand Chinese factories whose main effect is to take jobs away from Americans. Forbes Magazine has just published this year's list of the 400 richest people in America. That's the 1% of the 1% of the 1%. To be on this list, you need wealth equal to 23,000 times the median household income. I have updated chart I gave you folks last March, as copies provided, showing how the wealth needed to join this elite group has increased. The uber-rich are now five times richer by comparison than they were in 1982. The rest of us are getting poorer. Is this really God's plan? Make this community proud by saying enough is enough. Vote to prohibit coal trains to pass for Eugene. If you do this, more of your grandkids and their children will survive.
Sarah Higginbotham is next, followed by Charlie Pleibon.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Higginbotham. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. First and foremost, I represent Environment Oregon. We're a statewide citizen-based environmental advocacy organization. I've come before you multiple times, so it's good to see your faces again. I'm here to represent the thousands of members that we have here in Eugene, Oregon, first and foremost, to talk in support of the plastic bag ban that's before you tonight. You have an incredible opportunity to make a real and lasting impact on Oregon's environment tonight. You can vote tonight to ban the use of single-use plastic checkout bags in your city, and Eugeneans are estimated, according to the city, to use about 67 million of these plastic bags every single year. Now, whether they get thrown away into the garbage immediately after being used, whether they get placed mistakenly into curbside commingled recycling where they then go on to gum up recycling machinery and cost recyclers tens of thousands of dollars over the long term, or whether they're used to line waste bins or pick up pet waste, eventually, these bags end up in the environment where they never go away. Plastic bags do not biodegrade. Scientists tell us they have no idea how long they last for in the environment. What they do do is get caught in our waterways, they get caught out in the environment, they entangle, poison, choke, or suffocate millions of animals, marine mammals, and millions of birds every single year. And then eventually, they make their way out to the ocean where they break down into smaller and smaller pieces. Plastics are, work pretty much like a sponge, a super sponge, for toxic materials. So once they're out there in the environment, they start absorbing those toxins, and as they break down into smaller and smaller pieces, we have no idea how much longer they'll last in the environment. The Oregonian reported that all of these microplastics are now washing up specifically on Oregon's shores and beaches. So you can now head down to any of our beaches, dig relatively not that far underneath the sand, and find pounds of plastic, microplastics, that are now coming back to haunt us. So I urge you to take action and ban single-use plastic bags. They never go away, and you can make a huge difference tonight by doing that. So we've submitted over 2,000 petitions to the Eugene City Council. We've talked door-to-door on every single door with, excuse me, every single door that we knock on. Folks have been extremely supportive of this issue. I did also want to say that we support, you heard from Paul Cosgrove, I believe, earlier tonight. So Environment Oregon would be fine with Paul's first recommendation, that the language change about the recycled content of paper bags. We'd be fine and support Paul's change on the actual language around the type of paper bags content, so the post-consumer to Paul's recommendation. I believe that we'd be fine with that, and I'm happy to circle back on that. And then I wasn't able to hear his second recommendation, but what I believe it was, was that he opposes the pass-through cost on paper. It's something we still support. Thank you.
Charlie Pleibon is next, followed by Sage Fox.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners, Councilors. My name's Charlie Pleibon. I am the Oregon Field Manager for Surf Rider Foundation. I am here also to support the reusable bag ordinance that is before you guys tonight. I'm going to try and not take up a whole lot of your time, given that we have a public forum and a lot of people with a lot to say. We've been working on this issue for many, many years. I am here on behalf of our membership, not only in Eugene, but more importantly, our membership on the coast, who deals with this a lot. We are constantly on the beaches, we are constantly cleaning up the environment, we're tired of this, and things have got to change. The writing's on the wall for plastic bags, and this is a real issue. Plastics persist in our environment and are causing increasing persistent problems along our beaches. In the 10 years that I've spent on Oregon beaches, I can tell you firsthand, I've seen the changes to our beaches. I've seen the changes to our rivers, I've seen the changes to our waterways, and this is something that we're going to leave for future generations. I don't want to leave a clean-up mess for future generations. Like Ms. Higginbotham reported, Surf Rider Foundation would also support language on changing the recycled content. However, we do still support the fee. That is very important and critical within our membership and also to the folks who brought this forward. I'd also like to restate and reiterate that the number-one users of paper in the state of Oregon support this from the grocery industry. They represent a very large customer base for this industry, and they too support this five-cent fee as well. We think this makes economic sense, and we also think this, more importantly, creates that behavior shift to reusable bags, which is ultimately what our goal is. Thank you.
Sage Fox is next, followed by Cameron Fox. Sage Fox is next, followed by Cameron Fox.
My name is Sage Fox. I'm 14-years-old, and I'm here to oppose the outrageous coal scheme, which is to benefit only a handful of people through short-term jobs in Kus Bay and the lucrative coal industry. Coal is dirty from start to finish, and we should not be supporting it. We should be moving to clean energy instead, wind, solar, and other means. The overall health and environmental costs of coal are catastrophic. Emissions from coal-fired plants are to blame for an estimated 12,000 emergency room visits and $100 billion in medical costs annually, not to mention that the deadly emissions greatly contribute to global climate change. Furthermore, mercury fallout from burning coal gets into waterways and eventually, through fish and well water, gets into our bodies. Is this the kind of thing we want to be supporting? Here in Eugene, it's bad enough for asthmatics as it is due to copious amounts of pollen in the air, and the last thing we need is to have two of these dusty coal trains pass through here daily. Also, even the slightest chance of one of those coal trains running off the tracks and spilling their toxic coal all over the place is too much a risk to take. The proposed coal trains would rumble over many streams and rivers if a train derailed over or even near one of those streams. It would contaminate our water supply or the water supply of nearby communities and the fish. To mine coal, the land is stripped bare, and millions of tons of waste are dumped into the nearby valleys, increasing the risk of flooding, destroying stream beds, and poisoning waterways. The more coal trains are allowed to run on our railways, the more the demand for coal increases nationwide. Hundreds of the ancient Appalachian Mountains have had their tops removed for coal. Is coal really worth all of this? Then, when the coal is burned, it leaves behind toxic ash, which is dumped in various pits, and as a result, the health of nearby communities suffers. All communities and properties along the rail line would be harmed by this export scheme. As city council members, your duty is to protect the property and health of people in Eugene. It is not your duty to provide a handful of jobs in Kus Bay, and it's not our duty to supply coal to meet the energy needs of South Korea. In conclusion, this train is a line of harm from start to finish and for hundreds, for the hundreds of miles it travels. This is our chance to put our foot down before the train leaves the station. And also, I am all in favor of the ban on plastic bags. We just cannot afford to continue wasting them, and they never go away. I don't want our generation to have to clean themselves up.
Our last person is Cameron Fox.
My name is Cameron Fox, and I'm in support of the resolution. I must say first, this coal terminal is outrageous. Let us get a little background here on coal. First, worldwide coal burning releases 33 tons of mercury annually, and one gram can kill 20 people. Small from coal sends 12,000 people a year to the emergency room. To tag along with them is destruction of environment and toxic ash. Coal is not a safe fuel. In the last four years, dozens of coal trains have derailed, and the dust only increases the chances of derailment. Although the supporters assure us that a spray is sprayed on the tops, coal dust will still come off and build up, increasing the chances of derailments. In its long journey to Kus Bay, the coal trains would cross over countless streams and rivers which are essential for local fish populations and our drinking water. One single derailing would be catastrophic to our water supply. I believe Eugene should not take that chance. Coal smoke sends 12,000 people to the emergency room every year. It could lead to about 100 billion in metal bill costs annually. The inedible dust from passing trains and the increase in diesel particles in the air would much harm our air quality even further. Coal mining also causes environmental damage. Even though, by 2020, if we keep on going like this, then 1.4 million acres of forest will be destroyed by mining for that harmful little black rock. It has already damaged and destroyed 2,000, nearly 2,000 miles of streams, which is really too much. Even though the coal comes from the Powder River Basin, it will only cause the industry to grow. The ashes of coal are far from harmless. Living near these ash pits can be worse for a child than smoking a pack of cigars a day. It has arsenic, lead, and many other toxins. These lead into drinking water. I have lived in Eugene all my life, and so far, it has been a very cool place to live. But if these coal trains get approved, it will degrade air quality and self-esteem. The people of Eugene brag about being green, but it will not be if we approve this. What if a train derailed smack dab in the middle of our city? What would happen? Well, to start, the coal would probably get in our water and make Eugene pretty toxic. Even if one does not, would we really take pride in causing such havoc to South Korea? Well, personally, I would not. Thank you.
Close of public hearing, and thank everyone for coming and speaking to us today. And ask councilors if they have any comments they'd like to make? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is my last public hearing that I get to sit at as councillor for Ward 7, and I just want to share, I want to thank everybody for coming down. At my first, at my first public hearing, councillor Bettman at that time said, "This is the best part of being a councillor. This is like Christmas," and I have to agree with her. There's nothing more satisfying than hearing comments from our community, whether we agree with them or not. So, I really do appreciate people coming out and sharing their thoughts with us, and I really miss this part of being a councillor.
Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah. Thank you to the little foxes. I think it's good to hear from our, the young people in our community. Thank you for coming this evening. Regna from the Decisions for Social Responsibility asks that we add a clause in our resolution on coal trains to call for an independent health impact assessment. I think that's a good idea. It's not currently in the resolution, and I'm willing to add language if that, if the council's amenable to that. And then, Mel Bankoff, you still here? All of the children, kids that, youth that have signed that climate pledge. The council also passed a resolution asking the Obama administration and EPA administrator to use the Clean Air Act to regulate greenhouse gases and combat global warming, so I commend that resolution to your kids and your teachings as well.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Thank you all. Only other comment I would make before we move on to the next part of the agenda is, for those of you who don't know, we have a regional prosperity plan that we put together with our partners, county Springfield, chambers of commerce, university, Lane Community College, workforce partnership, metro partnership, and other partners, and you should, I invite you to go online and take a look at that because you'll see some of the direction we're heading with jobs and the work we're trying to do. Okay, we're going to move on to item number two. That's our consent calendar. Council President?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Moved and?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I see no comments. Would, all those in favor of the consent calendar, please indicate. One, two, three, four, eight, in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. Action item number three is the West Eugene Enterprise Zone Boundary Amendment. City Manager, you want to?
It's a real, thank you, Mayor. The council is being asked to consider a resolution that would provide a minor amendment to the West Eugene Enterprise Zone Boundary. The boundary expansion being considered would primarily support investments proposed by two local brewing companies, Oakshower Brewing and Hop Valley Brewing, both of which have secured sites immediately adjacent to the current Enterprise Zone Boundary. Utilization of this Enterprise Zone incentive to support these employment-generating investments is consistent with economic opportunities envisioned Eugene pillar and consistent with our regional prosperity economic development plan goals related to job creation and reduced unemployment. Growth in the beer, wine, and food production industries continues to be one of the bright spots in our local economy, and the emergence of a brewery district in the area of the proposed expansion has a strong connection to our goal of creating an economic identity for the region. Recommendation is approval of the resolution authorizing application to the state of Oregon for the proposed boundary amendment.
You, I'm going to have the council president put it on the table, and I've got Andrea and Betty in the queue.
I move to adopt Resolution 5072, authorizing application to the state of Oregon for a West Eugene Enterprise Zone Boundary Amendment. Second.
Moved and seconded. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this Enterprise Zone is actually, this amendment, this expansion is actually in my ward, and I did talk to quite a few of the community members out in the neck of the woods, and I'm not sure how to quite go about this, City Manager, so maybe you can lend some advice. But, you know, as we look at creating these kind of opportunities for multi-use neighborhoods, so to speak, how do we get to a point where we can have a conversation about the, about the impacts of what this has? I had a conversation with the Whittaker Community Neighborhood, and they're really concerned about the parking situation because it is becoming a go-to destination. There's no real, you know, transportation, public transportation doesn't go at the hours that this is, and there's a lot of parking that goes on in the neighborhoods. And so, I think that when I first got on council, also, I worked on this, and we worked on community values, and I'm wondering if that's where we can, we can kind of tweak it a little bit to look at multi-use areas like that for, for areas like this.
What we, what we can do is specifically take a look at the whole parking situation outside of this particular action, so we can-
Yeah, I mean, I support this action.
Yeah, regardless of the action, we can sure-
But I just feel like that's something that, and I shared that with Denny in the past around this because I felt it was something that really needed to be addressed.
Okay, so we can, we can do that regardless of the, this action.
Before I go on to Betty and George Brown, I wanted to, you know, Ninkasi had their groundbreaking for their expansion, and part of that, on their part, is an assessment of parking needs, so they're building that into that rather huge project that they're doing there, so that may help alleviate some of that, but part of the larger conversation. Betty?
I'm absolutely for encouraging local business. I'm happy they want to expand, but I do not want to give them a tax break. I think people, businesses in other parts of the city have expanded, remodeled, expanded, and we have not given them a tax break. I think they, I wish them success. I'm sure that they are expanding because they think it's financially feasible, and I will not vote for expanding the enterprise, however.
George Brown?
I've got a few questions. Yes, thank you. We kind of went over some of these things when we had the discussion about applying to the state for the E-Trade thing out, out further west, so I have a much clearer understanding of how this thing works, but I still have a few questions. They will get a three-year tax exemption, but only on the improvements that they make, any equipment and upgrading existing buildings perhaps, and any new buildings?
That's correct.
Okay, but the exemption will not apply to any property that they buy, the value of the land?
Nothing comes off of the tax rules that's currently on the tax-
Right, so they, if they buy a piece of property next door, they're going to have to pay the taxes on the land?
Correct, it's only the new investment that they make.
And they're eligible for this three-year exemption only if they hire, they have to increase their employment by 10%?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Let's say that they do that the first year. Let's say the second year, due to unforeseen economic problems, that they lose that and they could dip under 10% increase, do they lose the deduction for that year?
Yes, if you curtail employment, the statutes covers that pretty clearly. They would basically lose their tax exemption if they don't maintain the 10% increase.
And does your office monitor year by year, look at their-
Actually, the tax assessor, it's part of the reporting that they have to do directly to the tax assessor's office, so tax assessor has ability to disqualify them if they don't meet the-
That being that specer's office?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. I think, I think that answers my questions. Thank you.
Councilor Pollin?
Just to add on to that, Denny, correct me if it's changing, if I'm wrong, but if a company does default on the Enterprise Zone tax exemption, they have to pay back the exemptions that they-
That is correct.
Have received up to that point?
That is correct.
No, just to clarify for you.
Okay.
I think we're ready to vote on-
Couple of questions. Did, did Ninkasi get a tax break when they did their expansion?
Yes, they did, they're in-
With the Wees one? This, this same program?
Yes.
And that was only on, it was not on the property, it was only on the equipment and buildings?
Well, they actually built some new buildings there that were tax-exempt, plus the production equipment, et cetera, that went into that facility.
But not the property?
Not the land and whatever existing buildings were there.
It was the investment that they put in?
Correct.
I, I traditionally do not like big property tax exemptions that go on for a long period of time, because most of them, in my study of them and my experience of them, is that companies either leave right at the end of those, or they are not tied to job creation, and they go on for too long. This one is, however, different in two very significant ways. One, it is only three years, three significant ways. One, it's only for three years. Two, it's on the investment that they make, and three, it is actually tied to jobs. And if it doesn't, and if, and if the jobs go away, you don't get the tax break. So, those three things make this marginally acceptable to me, so I'll support it.
Councilor Pryor?
Yeah, I would just add quickly, I was on the council committee that created the Enterprise Zone requirements, working with staff, and there is a whole series of very specific and, I would say, restrictive rules that you have to comply with in order to receive the restrictions. So, it's unlike other kinds of tax exemptions where they're relatively open and they're very flexible. This one is very rigid, and you have to conform, and you have to abide, and I think that, in this case, makes this kind of a different situation that I'm very supportive of.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor, and opposition one, it passes. And so now, we're going on to our next item, and this is an ordinance encouraging the use of reusable bags. Council President?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5078, an ordinance concerning a ban on plastic bag use. Second.
Moved and seconded. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a sense of environmental responsibility and stewardship. I had, I strongly considered voting in favor of this at first, and I had very, I was favorably disposed to support the idea that, as many said, you shouldn't be using a product for 30 seconds that lasts for years and years and years and years in our environment. And that, as a, as a principle, I can absolutely understand and agree with it, and I absolutely, as an issue of environmental responsibility, wanted to support this. But when the additional portion of the five-cent extra tax newly created was added on to this, that's the point where I lost support. I'm absolutely about supporting the idea of environmental responsibility, but that's absolutely not what this is about anymore. This is about controlling people's behavior. This is about getting people to act differently, and it's about the creation of a grocery tax to get folks to behave like that activists want them to, and I'm not interested in supporting that. I think there are a number of bad things that, a number of detrimental effects from the added tax, and I can't support it.
I've got Council Pollin, Council Farr, and Council Taylor. Council Pollin?
Thank you. I'd like to echo Mike's comments about environmental responsibility, environmental stewardship. I can look at this, and I was glad when, when it first came up for discussion, because I had talked to a couple of the store managers that run larger grocery stores in my area, and they, they both indicated that this was an industry trend anyway, to transition away from the, the plastic bags. I think this is a matter of choice, not only a matter of choice of the industry making the change, but a matter of the citizens of our community to make a choice. It's not the bags that are causing the problem, it's the people that throw them away. These shopping bags that you get are not one-time-use bags. You know, I've got some in my hunting gear that I keep stuff wrapped up in, I've got them in, in my motorhome, use them to transport lunches back and forth if I'm working on a project. I mean, I could go on and on and on, and I've heard from a lot of people that say the same thing, that I want to make, and this is basically paraphrasing what I've been, what I've been hearing, I want to have the ability to make my choice of what kind of bag I use for various reasons, whether, you know, the rain on the paper bags versus the plastic bags, the convenience of the plastic bags. I've heard enough comments from people that I'm not going to be able to support this ban. I've heard enough comments from people that I'm not going to be able to support this ban. You know, I go buy the recycle bin there in the Albertson's store on Coburn Road almost on a regular basis, and where they have, where you can return these, these plastic shopping bags. And then, on a daily basis, when I see that, that thing is overflowing, where people are bringing them back. To say that these are, these are one-time-use bags, I think is labeling wrong. The one-time, the truly one-time-use bags, you go to Costco, you get the 300-roll garbage liners. That is a true one-time-use bag. If you're going to start banning one-time-use bags, how long before we move to the garbage can liners? How long before we start moving to the paper bags? And I have heard proponents of this ban state, or in emails that we've received, that not only should we ban these one-time-use bags, but they're also opposed to using paper sacks. I've heard from people in the community that say a five-cent fee on each paper sack is going to cause me to go shop elsewhere. I can't afford the five-cent fee, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The five-cent fee, whether we enact it or not, is going to be made up by the stores anyway. It's just the fact that these people are voicing these objections to this ban to me, and, and I'm not going to be able to support the ban.
Counsel Farr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I listened very closely to the previous two councillors speaking, and I agree with much, many of the points that they make. That being said, the sheer volume of the, what we're calling in this ordinance, single-use plastic bags, far exceeds the garbage bags that I use on the rolls from Costco. But, keep on, that's...
The matter's...
I'm speaking the obvious there, I guess. But, you know, as far as reusing them, my in-laws come over for dinner every Sunday, and they bring the same bag from Albertson's. They bring the Tupperware back in the bag, and they take the filled Tupperware out in the same bag, been using it for a long time. People do reuse them quite a bit, but not everybody does. In fact, overwhelmingly, people don't, overwhelmingly, they are sent for some form of recycling, which may or may not be effective. But I do have an issue with telling retail stores what they have to do and what they have to charge, and placing that kind of a, that kind of a restriction or that kind of a requirement on a retail store is against my, against my basic instincts. Years ago, I brought the first plastic bags into a large hardware store, which is located in West Eugene. My cashiers revolted, they didn't want to give the plastic bags, but they gradually started giving plastic bags. Recently, that same hardware store, Improvement Center, quit using plastic bags for the very reason that we're discussing it right now, that they wanted to, in their mind, be more responsible, and also, in their minds, support the wood products industry. So, I would, I'm going to propose an amendment to the, to the motion regarding Item 6.86, Plastic Use Bag, Plastic Bag Use Cost Pass Through. I'd like to change the first paragraph, the last word of that, it says the retailer shall, I'd like to change that to "may."
Second?
And Section A, subsection A of that, charge the reasonable, charge the customer a reasonable pass-through cost, period. Eliminate the rest of Section A, which says now, of not less than five cents per paper bag, et cetera. So, period after cost, and eliminate subsection B. So, plastic bag use pass-through is a shall, shall, as opposed to a may, and the five-cent period, this five-cent suggestion is removed, thereby allowing retail stores to do what retail stores do. They set the price of the product they sell. That's what retail stores do, and they will charge the margin that is required to maintain their operating costs. So, thank you.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate.
No discussion?
Hmm?
No discussion on that point?
Yeah, sure, but I didn't see any hands up.
The, without the five-cent fee, what we'll see is a massive shift to paper bags, just exactly what happened in Portland, when they didn't put the five-cent fee on, they saw a 491% increase in the use of past paper bags. And the, this is a ordinance I worked with and authored, but it really is a whole group of different people put together, and when business groups and environmental groups come together and agree on something, I stand up and listen. In this case, the environmental groups, Environment Oregon and Surf Rider and other folks, OLCV, have agreed with the grocers who, who support this, but the grocers only support this if the five-cent fee is there and it's mandatory, and because it is a level playing field for all of them. And they don't want to be put in the position of, of not having that level playing field and put in the position of having potentially that pretty large cost shift that would occur if they had to pay for paper bags for all of their customers. It's about them, depending on the size of the store, but a large grocery store, about $40,000 cost shift to the store if they don't get to institute that fee. So, the, the package that's presented here has been worked out with a whole bunch of different people at the table, and, and it includes having that mandatory fee. So, I would, and I think that's the behavior that we end up getting, is that five-cent fee creates, just like we do with the bottle bill, it's not a "may," charge five cents for a bottle, it's, it's a "shall." And that five cents, while isn't a lot of money, it may be, over a period of time, a significant, someone who doesn't have a lot of money, but that simple five cents is enough to shift people's behavior to bring back the bottles. It'll be the same here. This five cents is completely avoidable if you were to bring your own bag and reuse it, or a reusable bag. And remember, the title of this ordinance is actually encouraging the use of reusable bags. So, that's what it takes to encourage the reuse of usable bags, is this package of, and carefully thought-out provisions of this ordinance, including the five-cent fee.
So, in the first queue, before we had Pat's motion, I had Betty and Alan and Chris, and Betty just indicated she wants to speak on this one. Alan has spoken. Did you want to speak on this?
I'll speak on the main motion.
Okay, so Betty? And I have Mike and George Brown and Pat in the queue for this one.
I'm also concerned about the five-cent fee, but I would prefer incentives, and if we combine that with, if there's some way we could furnish reusable bags, I brought something for show and tell here. I have a bag here, which is lightweight, strong, washable, easily, I just throw it in the washing machine with my laundry, so you get rid of the germ argument. And if we could, this has an ad on it for Cathedral City, California. But if we could get people to advertise on bags and get bags of this type, which are washable, I think that would be an incentive, and that way, they could, I would like to see people give them away. Maybe the city could give them away. We could say "Sustainable Eugene" on the bag. But I hope that we'll, we'll do something like that in connection with, if we charge the five-cent fee, in connection with it. Thank you.
Mike?
I appreciate all the testimony earlier, but for those that spoke to us with the admonition that we considered the impacts on the environment, I want you to know that you just heard it clearly. This is not about protecting the environment. The author said so himself.
I didn't say that.
Alan?
He said that the title of this was to change people's behavior. Now, I'm not interested in doing that. I'm not interested in forcing people to change their behavior at the point of a tax on their groceries, especially in this economy. So, you know, let's, let's be clear, there's, there are no plastic bags made in Oregon, for crying out loud, as far as I'm aware. I'm happy to say, vote yes on that, if that were the issue on the table. I'd be in favor of it. I'd absolutely vote yes. But that's not what this issue is. This issue is about changing people's behavior in a manner that penalizes them with a new tax on groceries if they don't. And in these economical, in these, in this economy, that's just, it's not okay. It's not a thing that people can afford to do, it's the wrong message for our, you know, for our community, and I can't support it. So, if we're able to support Pat's amendment, that removes the problem, and I'd be happy to support the general motion.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm probably the only grocer at this table, maybe one of the few in the room, and I've been doing this for 42 years, and we went back and forth, and we never carried plastic bags, and finally, after many years of our customers asking to, we did, and they were thrilled. And they didn't use them very often, and we, I'm amazed at how few plastic bags we go through. I will not support the amendment to his motion. I think there should be a fee. I came around to that view. If anything, it should probably be more than a nickel, because a large grocery bag with handles costs about 25 cents, almost, 22 cents. So, however, we always gave them away, and if we get the nickel back on, on our cost, that's fine with me. It'll be a little hassle, but it's not much of a hassle, we just change the, the key on the cash registers, boom, add it on. People can avoid it, like Counselors Zelenka said, by bringing their reusable, you know, cloth or, or some other form of plastic bag. So, I, it's a small step, it's really not about, I don't think it's about forcing people to conform to some new behavior especially. I think it's really ultimately about cleaning up the ocean in a waterways. I think that's, that's, that's the purpose. It's not, you know, some kind of behavior modification for, being forced on people. It's a small step. Stores, we, you know, we do, we've done different promotions with reusable bags, we've given them away, we sold them at cost, we've sold them at a quarter above cost. There's all kinds of ways the stores can interact with their customers to get them used to this new scheme. And really, you know, people are real flexible, and they'll adapt to it very easy, it will not be this great burden. I mean, you know, Eugene has, our gas tax is two cents more than Springfield's, I believe. Is everyone driving to Springfield to buy gas to save two cents? No, they're really not. It's really not worth it. A nickel, I think most people will find that a nickel's not a big deal. They'll all just have to get used to it, the stores will too. It'll be a change for us. It's a small step, it's symbolic, really, in the grand scheme of things worldwide, it's just one little tiny thing, but we have to start somewhere. And I think it's a good, I think it's a good step, and symbolic steps are good, because they can lead to bigger steps down the road. So, I, I will not support the amendment, but I will support the resolution.
Counsel Farr?
Thank you. You know, the, there are people adverse to using bags, reusable bags, and Counselor Taylor throws those in the, in the laundry, laundry machine, at whatever cost that is, probably more than a nickel to wash a bag. But, you know, I have a salmonella test strip here that we can use on your bag and see how it, how it comes out. You know, people are adverse to using them, people will continue to use, want to use paper bags for the very reason that they don't, simply don't want the risk of contamination from the, from the reusable bags. That's going to happen, I've heard it over and over again. And I, I have a risk of, you know, there's my friends in the grocery industry who first brought this to my attention a couple of years ago, and, and at the risk of getting crosswise with a large grocery store association a little bit, the small grocery stores don't give plastic bags quite often, and I see people at the market that I shop at regularly counting out their pennies. Now, Counselor Taylor and others talk about how every nickel affects, or every small amount of increased fees affects how people feed their families, how people afford their bills, whether it's an utility fee or whatever it may be. So, by adding five or 10 or 15 or 20 cents to people's grocery bill, people who are adverse to using the potential, potentially, potentially contaminated reusable bags, adding that to the cost of their grocery bill causes them, when they're counting out their pennies at the little store that I shop at, to maybe not buy something that they needed to buy. So, that's a, you know, that's a, that's a stretch of an argument, no doubt about it, but it does go back to the fact that grocery stores and other retailers should be able to decide whether or not they want to charge for a bag. They can pass through the cost, whether it's 25 cents for the handled bag or whatever it may be. And in, in response to Counselors Zelenka and the bottle bill, the nickel that we pay for a bottle is a refundable deposit. We're not talking about a refundable deposit on the paper bag. Now, certainly, can we use a paper bag, but it's not a refundable deposit the way plastic, the way bottles are, so it's a different issue completely. So, I hope that you all support me on this. I want to support the plastic bag ban. I want to see, you know, we've heard, heard the tales of grocery bag islands the size of Texas in the middle of the Pacific. Well, I left last time I flew over there, and I didn't see one, but, but someplace, you know, there are lots and lots of bags that people have used, and I'd like to be able to support this bill, but it's really difficult for me to do so when we're placing that kind of restriction on people who are trying to operate their business in a fair manner in the city of Eugene.
Counsel Pryor?
Yes, specifically to this amendment. I, I understand exactly what Counsel Farr is trying to do. He's trying to create flexibility in the system that people can respond to it, and as folks know, one of the things I like about what we do is the certainty that can be built into it, and five cents per bag builds a certain level of certainty, and you know what the system is, you know how it works, you know where you get charged. At the same time, I also appreciate giving somebody the opportunity to either charge or not charge. It really cuts into the behavior change element, and I'm not uncomfortable with the behavior change. That's kind of what we're trying to do here, is, like the bottle bill was changing behavior, we were trying to change behavior, and I don't consider that to be a bad thing. We're changing behavior for a purpose, and the purpose is environmental. We're not changing it as an experiment, we're changing it in order to create an environmental benefit. I think with that said, in weighing the considerations, I am willing to support Counselor Farr's amendment, even though it gets away from the certainty that I like, but it does provide grocers with flexibility and freedom, which is something else that I like. And I recognize that the Grocers Association supported the fee, but I think they would not necessarily be opposed to the opportunity to still charge a fee. In other words, they're, we're concerned about the cost impact. This still allows them to do that. What I would not want to see would be somebody turning this, though, into a profit-making opportunity, where I start charging a dollar a bag in order to make money. I, I hope that wouldn't be the result. I hope that this would be kept within reasonable limits, but I'm willing to support the amendment to keep this thing moving, to keep the spirit of what the Grocers Association is looking for, but to provide some level of flexibility.
Counsel Zelenka?
So, Betty, one of the things that the grocers have committed is to do a reusable bag campaign where they will give away plastic, or reusable bags to people in the community, and they've done that in, in the other communities where they've done this. So, and, and there may be other ways to get more bags out to people as an incentive to be able to do them, especially if we do what you suggested, which is to put advertising on them and things like that. But clearly, this is an environmental issue. It's about litter, it's about habitats, it's about animals, and that's the end goal, be it, be it behavior change. And that's how you get better environment, is to change people's way of doing things or what they buy or what they purchase. This is not a tax, because it is completely avoidable, and potentially will not add a nickel to anybody's grocery bill if they bring their bag, which hopefully the grocers can supply for them. And it's actually better than, than the refundable deposit on a, on a, on a bottle, because it's completely avoidable. You don't get a choice with the bottle bill. And issues about safety, I think that's a, a pretty much of a red herring issue. The Consumer Reports study that I've shared with you all, as well, has, has shown that that's a non-issue, and Pat, you well know, all over Europe, they haven't used, they've used reusable bags, cloth bags for years, decades in some cases, and all over the, all over the world. In fact, countries have completely gone towards that as their, their bag choice, and without problem. So, I think the safety issue is a, is a red herring. So, I encourage people to support the "may" language, or "shall" language.
I think we're ready to vote on Counsel Farr's motion.
Could we have him repeat that, please?
Would you repeat it, please?
Thank you, yes. On, on Section 6.86 of the ordinance, Plastic Bag Use Cost Pass Through, the last word of the first paragraph, which currently says "shall," should be changed to "may," and then subsection A, charge a customer a reasonable pass-through cost, where it says "of not less than five cents," with no upper limit, by the way, is what it says now, a period after cost, eliminating "of not less than five cents," and then eliminating subsection B, which is indicate on the customer's transaction receipts, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four. All those in opposition? All those in opposition? One, two, three, four. So I personally have consistently been supportive of this bag ban when it went to legislature and through the whole process since then. I think it's the right thing to do, and I think, as much as I appreciate the, trying to find the soft spot or the sweet spot, I think it ends up being fairly unsweet. So I'm, so I am going to vote no on that. So it goes down, and we're back to the main motion. Can I get you one?
I have another amendment.
Okay.
I move to amend in section, under recycled paper bags, section A, to remove the word "post-consumer," so that it would read "contains a minimum of 40% recycled content." Do you second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
It's in the definitions section?
Yeah.
6.850.
Any discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It passes. Thank you for that. Now we're back to the main motion as amended. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those in opposition? Two? Thank you. Next action item of the evening is a transport of coal for export through Eugene. Council President.
I move to adopt Resolution 5065 opposing the transport of coal for export through Eugene.
Moved, seconded. Do you need a second?
Second.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. And Betty, excuse me, Counselor Taylor, Counselor Clark. Counselor Taylor.
If anything is a no-brainer, this is, it's so obvious that we should pass this even though we...
Mayor.
We can't stop it, but we can certainly express an opinion. And whatever we can do to stop this, we should do. I thought we should vote on it the first time it came up. But definitely, we should add our voice to those people who are standing up for the environment, for the health of people, and for common sense. And I think it's, all the arguments have, many of you have stated all the arguments, so don't need to say them over again. But it's a no-brainer.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. In the findings in section A and in section B, it talks about the specifics of a specific deal in Wyoming that Coos Bay is in negotiation with. It's my understanding, and perhaps I'm incorrect, but it's my understanding that the county commissioners decided to hold off on discussing this because it seems that perhaps there's some question as to whether or not that agreement is still in place. City manager, can you tell me whether or not that agreement exists?
No, we can't tell you right now.
I understand the concern of a lot of folks to deal with this, but like the county commission decided not to deal with it simply because it's not an issue anymore, as I understand it at the moment. It's not a deal that's out there. So this is rather just like banning something that might take place for the sake of feeling good about doing so. The interesting part to me is that this, the resolution doesn't actually ban anything because we haven't that authority. It does commit the city's resources to doing a great deal of work. I believe that will be futile work because it's rather like, we don't have a good idea of how much benzene flows through our community on rail or on truck, or chlorine for that matter. Have you ever read it about what would happen if a large container of chlorine were to spill as it rolled through our community? It would be devastating, by far worse, and it happens all the time. There are many kinds of dangers that go through our community regularly, but this one, for whatever reason, has the public's eye. That kind of policymaking concerns me. I don't know that we have the authority to do this any more than we have the authority to say we will no longer allow chlorine to pass on trains through our community. The trains are a federal vehicle, are a federal facility, much like the interstate highway is. We don't have the authority to say, we don't want this particular thing to travel on the train tracks through our community any more than we can say, we don't want chlorine to travel up and down I-5 through our community, any more than we can say, we don't want red cars to travel on I-5 through our community, or any more than Roseburg could say, we don't want cars from Eugene to travel through our community. We just don't have that authority, any more than we could say on a federal waterway. We, if we were the majority that wanted things to float through our community on a federal waterway, we don't have that ability either. So for me, we're wasting a lot of our city resources on something that doesn't actually protect us and doesn't actually do anything, not to mention the fact that in one part it says, we're going to support the governor's desire to study it, even though we are already going to ban it, no matter what the outcome of the study is. It's rather like ready, fire, aim for me. Thank you.
Counselor Pauling.
Well, Mike, just, excuse me, Counselor Clark just pretty much summed up what I was going to say. I too question the authority that we have to take this action. Section three of the resolution seems like something we should have done first before we've even started discussing this, and that is whether or not, it says shall explore whether there are local, state, or federal laws protecting public health, safety, and air quality that can be used to prevent the transport of coal through the city. You know, why didn't we research that first? You know, and then, you know, we're voting to ban possible coal trains, but then again, we're asking for a pragmatic and comprehensive environmental impact statement. Why didn't we do that first? You know, the governor's called for it, why don't we wait until we get the results of that? You know, who knows by what time this, even if this does go through, this project does go through, what advances that they have in technology. I'm not going to debate whether or not coal's good or bad. That's, you know, that's all the scientific stuff that's been presented to us. My question is, I think this, you know, and granted, there may be other cities that have passed a similar or the same resolution, but I think it was done in the wrong order. And I can't support something that says, we're going to ban this, but we're also going to study why we need to look at maybe banning it. I mean, it's like Counselor Clark said, it's the old adage, ready, fire, aim. And we're just going the wrong way.
Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, this has been a very difficult one, and I have to be honest and say, I'm, I go back and forth in terms of where I am with this. And part of the reason is, and everybody here is kind of acknowledging, whatever it is we do is largely symbolic. It doesn't carry any sort of weight of authority. It asks for some research to be done, and it encourages certain actions, but it is basically symbolic. So we have to approach this from the standpoint of, do we want to say something symbolic about having coal transported through the community? And I also have to look at this from the dimension of, what do I need to be concerned about within my city, and what do I need to be concerned about in the larger world? Because there's a symbolism there as well. And that's also something that is very confusing to me. And there are many unanswered questions. Part of the reason we delayed was to try to get some answers. We got some answers, but we haven't got all the answers, so there's still a lot unknown. Will it still happen? Will surfactants be used? Can they put covers on the cars? How many will they be? Huge numbers of unanswered questions. So we're sending a symbolic message still with a lot of unanswered questions. I appreciate what Counselor Zelenka's doing. I think he's wanting to say something symbolic, and I think that's important for us occasionally to do. So where do I go with this, and how am I? What can I do? And I try to bring this down to a level that I would react to as a person. And if my children came to me and said, you know, I want to do something, and it's something I'm not familiar with, or I don't have a lot of answers about, and they say, I want to do this thing until it hurts me, or until we find out that it's bad for me to do. Can I do this until we find out that it's bad for me to do? Or should they say, you can't do that until I find out that it's okay to do? What should I tell my kid? You can do it till you get hurt, or I find out that it's bad, or don't do it till we find out that it's okay. Which way should I go? What should I tell my child? And this issue for me is like that. For my community, should I say, you can run coal trains through here until we find out that they're bad? Or maybe we shouldn't run coal trains until we're absolutely sure that they're okay? And for me, that's kind of where this issue is coming down. And in that context, I'm inclined to say, because I don't have answers, because I don't have information, to my own child, I would say, you know, I got to say, don't do that until I'm sure it's okay. And so in this case, for that reason, even though there's a lot in this resolution that I don't buy, I think it's hyperbolic and I don't necessarily agree with it, but at its core, it's something I feel at least okay with at a symbolic level. And that's really what this is, is symbolism. So I'll go ahead and support it, but that is the reason why.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is, as Counselor Taylor puts it, a no-brainer for me. This is in my board. The rail track that this will run on, if it does come to pass, is maybe 300 feet from my front door. So it's not a, you know, it's right there for me. So, but the things that I do want to say to the rest of the community is, I would really encourage you to, when you come to talk, not I want to scold anybody, but when you come to talk to a public, in a public hearing, please make sure your facts are well. I've done my research, and a lot of the things that people have concerns about won't come to pass. And so, and there are a lot to be said about the safety issues that they are saying that they are trying to work on. It is true that the rail yard pretty much has to deliver everything that comes to their dock. They don't have a choice. I also want to say that if we could, at any point in time, say, chlorine, you can't come through our front yard anymore, I would do it. If we had that power, believe me, I would use it. If there was anywhere that we could close those plants down that are polluting my neighborhoods, I would do it. But we don't have that power. So, but from here on out, from this point, you know, we do have something to say about this. So I think that, you know, be it symbolic, I do think that a lot of voices together can change. And so, you know, all this talk around this issue and around the other issue, we're talking about behaviors of communities and community expectations. And I really believe that a lot of people can change how we are here in this world. And I think this is one of those issues where perhaps, maybe, it'll move the dial a little bit in a direction that is definitely safer for people.
Counselor Zelenka.
So the, I noticed that the port did not say that the negotiations had completely collapsed, and this deal was completely off the table and will never happen. They didn't say, never mind, like Roseanne Rizanadana used to say. There is, there was no inked deal when this resolution was prepared, but it's still alive and well, and it's a broader issue than just the Coos Bay line. Obviously, if you read the resolution, it does not say that we ban coal trains from the city of Eugene. And what it does say is that while we strongly support the use of rail and the Coos Bay rail link for freight and the resulting jobs at the Port of Coos Bay, we find that coal trains through our city have adverse social, economic, and environmental consequences without much economic benefit to our community, that it, and that coal trains will have, and it's incompatible with all the policies that we have to improve air quality, enhance public health, and promote local food production. It also says that exporting coal to Asia for electricity production is inconsistent with all the policies that we passed around greenhouse gases and climate change. And it also says that we will explore ways to look at preventing coal trains from going through here by using the laws that exist today. I know that's a tough road to hoe, but that's not something we would do unless the council directs city staff to do. I ask, go incline that. That's not something that we, that one council can ask them to do. The council has to ask them to do. So if this passes, they'll look at that. It would be inappropriate for them to look at before we did that. And then finally, what it does is it asks for support for Governor Kitzhaber and Senator Merkley's call for a cumulative environmental impact statement, and all of these proposals in the Northwest that are an unprecedented number of coal export proposals, and the potential impacts on our country. One of the things that I would like to add, and I would move to amend to add another section to the resolution that said, and here's the wording, "The city of Eugene calls for review of a comprehensive, independent health impact statement before any permits are approved and for any proposed coal export project." For any proposed coal export project. And that's exactly what, Chris, you were talking about, is that calls for more information before we say, this is okay to do, because we just don't know. And this independent health impact statement would help us do that.
You're putting that amendment out there?
Yes, if there's a second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion on that? All those in, yes?
Before you vote, Counselor Zelenka, can I assume that you are adding this as a new section five, and that five and six will just get renumbered?
Correct. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Want me to restate it?
Go ahead.
The city of Eugene joins the call for review of a comprehensive, independent health impact statement before any permits are approved for any proposed coal export project.
All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In opposition? There must have been eight.
There's eight.
Eight. No opposition, all right? So as amended, you're back to the main motion. As amended, all those in favor, please, whoops?
I'll speak.
All right.
This is the main motion. As amended, okay. I'm, you know, if this were more specific, if it said, if it were an amendment calling for a ban on rail cars that sifted 500 pounds of coal dust on their journey from Wyoming to the coast, then I would be in favor of discussing that more in depth. But I'm afraid that this resolution contains a lot of speculation and a lot of actual fallacy. Unless Mr. Nelson's not telling the truth, which I suspect that Mr. Nelson is telling the truth, section D, the trains are not likely to be covered due to danger of fires. There's no indication that fires are an issue due to cover. I'm only talking about this one, that we could go through the entire resolution. Another one, nor are they likely to be sealed with a surfactant to prevent the coal dust. And we received testimony tonight that Union Pacific is requiring the sealing with surfactants. So this is wrong. So if we vote yes on this, we're voting on something that at least that one segment is incorrect. So why would we put forward a symbolic resolution that isn't even correct, whatever it may be incorrect about? And there are more things in here that are speculative. You know, we find, a number of things that we do find, well, we speculate on a lot of those things because we've not really actually found them. We've heard a great lot of testimony in regard to them. But we've also heard a lot of emotional testimony that contains things that simply are not the truth. For instance, well, a gram of mercury can poison 25 acres of water. There's no supporting evidence to that. There are all kinds of testimony. Cost is the most risky economic market in the world. Coal train derailment is not an if, but a when. Decline of domestic coal industry should be a warning. The Port of Coos Bay should itch its wagon to a, should not hitch its wagon to a shooting star. You know, there are a lot, a great deal of testimony, a lot of good testimony. You know, do I want my grandchildren to have coal dust on their lungs? I grew up in Sheffield, England. My dad's from Newcastle. This is the coal country that I'm from. Of course I don't. You know, when we cleaned our, cleaned things in our yard in England because coal was burned, continued on a daily basis in Sheffield, we had thick coal. That's not what we're talking about. You know, there is no evidence that there's going to be thick layers of coal all over everything. And so by passing a symbolic resolution, which contains certainly non-factual information just in that one section alone, then we're passing a symbolic resolution that is passing, that is sending a message to the people who read it now and forever, that the city council should hitch its wagon to this kind of symbolism. Now, the kind of symbolism goes beyond this resolution. It goes beyond when, it goes in that, into other communities who may be looking to locate a company here, that if we're opposing this symbolically, what are we going to oppose when they are deciding between Boise and Eugene for a manufacturing plant? So we can't vote on, vote yes on something that's not factual.
Counselor Zelenka.
Well, both are factual, and both are actually true. The fire hazard that they're referring to is fire, I think was exact words were, we're not aware of any fire hazard on coal trains. What is true is there are no covered coal trains in the United States because coal emits a gas that is explosive. If they were to capture that gas...
If they were to capture that gas in a completely covered without ventilation, it would explode. And that is a fact. And there are no, there is no existing technology to prevent that from happening, because there's none that's available. And Congressman DeFazio, at his town hall meeting, addressed this specific fact, had a conversation with the president, I think it was BNSF, where he asked them to, could we fix this? And they said, yeah, but it would cost this much, millions of dollars, and we have, and you just need to change Congress laws to allow us to then turn around and charge the coal companies to be able to do that. Well, the coal companies are also very interested in this issue too. They have recently squashed the ability of the train companies to actually charge them for either a cover or the surfactant. And in fact, just recently, they went up through the courts and it was struck, struck down the tariff to pay, require the coal companies to apply the surfactant. And the coal companies in Wyoming and Montana said that it would cost between 50 and $150 million a year to put the surfactant on their trains, and they objected because they didn't want to do that. And they won. And today, that tariff doesn't exist. So there is no requirement by any train company to do that. They, the train companies just recently submitted another tariff, which I'm sure is going to be wrangled in lawsuits for the next couple of years. So this issue about surfactants being required and being cheap and it's no big deal and it will happen all over the place is bogus. There is, the train companies are, the coal companies are not going to let it happen. They'll fight to the death. So, well, you got to listen to what he said and not what you interpreted as him saying. So there is no technology for coal, for coal covers and there is no ability for them to charge them for the surfactant. And how many people think that the coal companies are going to voluntarily spend 50 to $150 million for surfactant on their coal trains?
That's speculation, Alan.
No, no, okay, nobody. So, so those two things in the resolution are based in fact, and they are clear to me that this issue is about big coal and it's about the transport of coal to access an Asian market with big profits and with huge impacts on climate change, global warming.
Ready to vote? All those in favor of yes?
No, I'm not going to say it.
We could go on all night.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion? Indicate. One, two, three, four, five. In opposition? One, two, three, it passes. Thank you very much. And that
Go Ben Grisley, Dave.